Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to March 27, 2019, meeting of the Danville-Boll County Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you for your presence. As tradition, we'll begin our meeting in prayer. Our God and Father in heaven, we thank thee for this most beautiful day and all the blessings of it, the health you've given us today, letting us enjoy life again. We thank thee for this community we live in. We thank thee for this country we live in. We thank thee for the freedoms we enjoy, the safety and protection we enjoy. Continue to pray for our servicemen and women, that you would help those conflicts be resolved and bring them home to their loved ones as soon as possible. Pray today for Lisa, as she is suffering physically from several things, that she would be healed and be back to us as soon as possible. Be with us today as commissioners, when we make decisions that are betterment for all those involved and certainly for the betterment of this community, and all things we ask and pray. Item C, approved minutes, 2019, February 27. Jim moves, we approve. Wendy seconds. Questions, discussion on a motion to approve minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you. Financial report, item D.
Yeah, thank you. I think this is on. Not much to add. I know we've got a long agenda, but it's in your packet. And I'd be glad to answer any questions. The balance statement and the budget actuals in there. And again, glad to answer any questions you might have on the finance report.
General, how we doing financially, Steve?
Everything looks good. We're right on track again. I think after 10 months, we'd be at like 68 and some change percentage wise. You can see we're trending over in revenue, and I think all the expense categories are pretty much in line. Personnel's a tad high, just because we haven't amended the budget when Lisa went full time. We're going to do that next month. But everything else, 50, 59, 68, so we're right in line expense wise. And we had a pretty active month in February, so it's looking good.
Questions, discussion on the budget report?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Terry moves, we approve. Mary Beth seconds. Questions, discussion on a motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you. Item E, construction sureties for March.
That is actually in your packet, again, just as a courtesy item, let you know where we're standing. We are making some progress, or we're getting ready to take some steps on the Maple Tree Place drainage project. We've met this week with the city. It looks like we're going to get that construction hopefully initiated in the next few weeks. The HOAs met again. They're anxious to get this done. And then the Fox Harbor streetlights, that's a very unique process on how we close that, bond out. But we'll hopefully get that. That's all that's left, is getting streetlights up on the other two sides of that circle. Hopefully, we'll get these both done this summer and get those behind us. Hunt Farm, you remember, sidewalk, and that's the developers installing those as he builds the homes. And so that one, he should be making a request, or could make a request to draw that down. But there's just a couple lots left that still need sidewalks out there. Again, that's just a courtesy review, or in your packet for that reason.
Progress has been made there on the Hunt Farm?
Oh, yeah. He's building homes. Permits have been issued, and he's building sidewalk segments as they build the homes.
Any other questions or concerns on sureties? Item L, subdivision approvals. Bucks, Bucks, Revard, and Sari.
I'm going to attempt to do these, as you heard our chairman say, we've got staff members been out, and I'm taking notes for the minutes. In fact, I did the minutes in your packet. I was glad to hear that vote. Not even a question there, so that's good. So I'm probably not doing as much as I normally do. All the surveyors, engineers, I believe, are here, there's Dale, and Kendall, and Nancy. I don't see, and Steve Carroll. So I might just tell you what firm it is, and let them come up and give you a quick rundown, so I can take notes for the minutes, if that's okay. And this first one's AG East Platte. Let Dale come up and make a comment on that.
Morning, Dale.
Morning. This first platte is the, what used to be the old Lowe's out on the bypass, Perryville Road. The cinemas are there now, and this is the building that is behind that project that was Title Town Bingo, was where that was held at. All we're doing here is just creating an acre with that building. And there will be a easement granted across the rest of the Bucks property to get to this property, even though it has its own road frontage. The entrance right now is coming off of the Bucks property. So that's about all this one is, is just creating one acre with that easement.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Terry moves, we approve. And Vince seconds. Questions, discussion on a motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Number two, Mildred Berry Estate, Allen Springs, 4205.
This is a piece of property in Allen Springs. It's about a 200-acre tract, and all they're doing is creating a five-acre tract around the existing house that is presently there, and then the rest of the farm, the balance of the remaining farm. So we're just showing it in two tracts, the remaining and the five-acre tract.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Jeff moves, we approve. Jim seconds. Questions, discussion on a motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Item three, Catherine Bright, Marla Muncie, 1225 Hope Road, 7.7 acres.
Good morning, folks.
Morning, Nancy.
The five, I think it's a five-acre tract, was off conveyance several years ago. Mrs. Muncie has approached the Brights and to give her a little bit more land, so we're showing the off conveyance and combining it with whatever else she had.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Jeff moves, we approve. Mary Beth seconds. Questions, discussion on a motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Number four, Rex Whitlock, 15.6, 84 acres, 994 Mill Creek Road.
Don't ask me where it is.
Where is it, Nancy?
That away. That's the best I can do. Mr. Whitlock is off conveying 15 acres and some change to give to his son to build a house.
Jim moves, we approve.
I'll say it.
Terry seconds. Questions, discussion on a motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Nancy. Number five, Lorraine Coulter, 211 acres at Zero Kentucky Highway 300 and Lower Salt
This platte is a farm division for the Lorraine Coulter Trust. It's, in the end, basically, the farm's going to be in 10 tracts. There's like 11 tracts, actually 12 right now, but two of those are just non-conforming little small pieces. It's going to be conveyed to another joiner. So basically, it'll be 10 tracts that we're creating. The platte that you all have before you here, we've added a couple notes, just the process of how we felt, or went about, basically, performing the survey with some of the joiners. So we do have a new platte besides what you have there in front of you. This property joins Kentucky 300, and it also joins Upper Salt River Road on the north side of the property. There'll be three tracts off of Upper Salt River Road, and then seven tracts off of 300.
In tech review, we looked at this, or a few things that had to be corrected. One, it said Lower Salt on the bottom and the title block. A few little housekeeping items that Jim and Mary Beth and myself saw, and so Dale's got to revise the platten here today. But they were just housekeeping on the road names. I don't think we had anything else, building setback lines. Verifying if there are any structures on the properties and any non-conformities. Everything else met our requirements. But yeah, we're cutting this into several tracts, and they lettered them pretty well, so you can kind of roll around, down the hill a little bit, and A, B, C, D, and you can see each track, each acreage, and determine all the frontages. And Dale's got revised plaques right there.
These tracks average from the smallest, is like 1.4 acres, up to about 47 acres.
Questions?
I'll make the motion, we approve.
Terry moves, we approve. Mary Beth seconds. Questions, discussion on a motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Number six, William Patricia Hundley, 15 acres, 545 Nealed Road.
Good morning. This is a...
You are?
Steve Carroll.
I'm sorry?
Steve Carroll.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it.
William and Patricia Hundley are going to off convey 15 acres. It's an agricultural division. There's a 100-foot strip that goes out to Nealed Road to give the sufficient road frontage. That's pretty much straightforward. There's only going to be one house built on Track Two.
Motion to approve.
Jeff moves, we approve. Vince seconds. Questions, discussion on a motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Item seven, John Stomberger, 1.17 acres, 1220 Bluegrass Pike.
It's me again. John and Shawna Stomberger built a house on the Horn Family Farms several years ago. At that time, when they built the house, and after they put their fences up, they didn't really pay any attention to where any of the property lines were, because basically, the same family owned the farm, and John and Shawna just owned the house. So they're in the process of maybe doing something a little bit different there now. So that's the reason we had to create these little sliver, non-conforming tracts, is because they wanted the fence line to be the property line. So we actually had to create three non-conforming tracts. Two of them will be coming from Horn Family Farms to John and Shawna Stomberger, and then the third track will be going from John and Shawna back to Horn Family Farms. So it's quite a bit of work there for not a whole lot going on, except it's just a little bit complicated.
Motion to approve.
Jeff moves, we approve. Wendy seconds. Questions, discussion on a motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Jerry and Sandra Darlin, 1.43 acres on Zero Duncan Hill.
You've been busy, Dale.
Yeah. This platte, we surveyed this several months ago as a retracement for the owner, and he sold the property. And it was basically, he owned several tracts out there, but those three are the ones that he was selling. So he was selling the entirety of the three tracts. He basically just wanted to define where that area was. So we did a retracement platte for him, and then he sold the property, and now the new owner is going to build a house, so we have to combine those tracts into one, so that he won't interfere with his setback lines. That's what this platte is.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Jim moves, we approve.
Second.
Jeff seconds. Questions, discussion on a motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Item nine, Danville Host LLC, 1.405 acres of Zero Shannon Way.
Hey, Kendall, morning. Good morning. Kendall Wise, Vantage Engineering. And the lot that we're creating is a commercial property with utilities and streets in place, everything except sidewalks at this point, in that the lot's located adjacent to the
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve? Terry? Mary Beth seconds.
Where exactly is this, Kendall? It's about here. East the Cavillman's.
Yeah.
So that lot is just east, unapproved road section. All of this part of the road is already, portion of it's developed. You see the right-of-way dedication there, 75-foot of new road, as well as the new lot. So it'd be touching the bypass, wherever it is touching Shannon, the reverse front of the road. And at this point, again, we've already talked to the city about that new dedication, that right-of-way, and then all that's really left out there is sidewalks that would be obstructed. I guess that's about it.
Right. I mean, we're creating this lot pretty quickly, so that there can be a closing, and we're going to follow up shortly with another platte that dedicates right-of-way along, all the way around the loop and back into the bypass. So that's going to be coming out shortly, but we don't have that ready at this point.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Questions, discussion on a motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Item 10, Jackman Stigall, 29.932 acres, 901 Shakertown Road.
The Stigall property was three tracts of land at the small farm in Danville next to Streamland, and it's just something that the family wanted to get a modern survey on and quantify what was there, and just have a good grasp of what they have. So we've shown that the three tracts will be consolidated as, you know, moving forward, it would be one farm.
Questions?
My note too, it's split zone, it's AR1, has GRA in the rear, a little slipper GRA in the front corner on the road. So it's not, it's on, it's on, it's not consolidated in one tract.
How does that, once it goes to one tract, like it, how does that zone thing work?
It would be split zone.
Still split zone.
Sure, and it's noted on handles of zip, so you know where that is. I would think as a landowner, someday, you may want to consolidate your zone, or clean up your zone, but at this point, they just want it consolidated in one parcel. A big chunk of it's GRA to the rear of the property.
No, we do not. Jeff moves, we approve. Wendy seconds. Questions, discussion on a motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. And item 11, Mike Webb, Zero Highway 150, Perryville.
Mr. Webb has a, I don't remember the acreage, a large tract of land that was recently surveyed by Nancy Estes, Estes Engineering. But the reason we're creating a lot, they're going to build a new home, and for financing reasons, they're going to separate, they want the home on a separate, smaller tract of land that mainly just for financial reasons, and that's the...
Two-acre tract, and there's 20, 21, and some change.
So where's Zero Perryville Road? Where is that? Give us some kind of a reference, Kendall can?
Okay. It's west of Perryville, towards Springfield, probably two miles out of town.
Okay, thank you.
Each doctor's ward, the creek runs through the property, and a lot of pieces have been cut off, and taken from Springfield Road to clear.
Got it. Jeff moves, we approve. And Mary Beth seconds. Questions, discussion on a motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kendall. Item G, public hearing, Charlene Benji Estate filed application rezon property of tract of land containing .362 acres located at 100 Fox Harbor Drive.
All right. Thank you, guys. And I told you, it's a busy February. Quick math, what's 11 times $141? And you see why. I told you we had a good month. There's a lot of plaits. Might be a record, actually, 11, not sure. Most I've done. But we got to the zone change here, so again, we got a very unique zone change, but it should be pretty easy, and looks more complicated than I think it is. Property we're talking about's right here on the corner. This is TSC, Denmark, Fox Harbor, some storage buildings, but this is a property I think we all know is an older beauty college or...
Focus on that thing?
What's that?
The focus.
Looks pretty good to me, but I'll agree with you. We'll zoom in here in a second. And so it's on the corner, we know it's an old beauty school, beauty college, and there's a picture of it. Most of you guys probably have seen this, but I want to get to the zoning map, and then we'll talk about a few things. The zoning of this property is GRB, or what we know as small lot residential. That would have been R2 way back in the day. So it is interesting how we have a beauty college, some storage buildings, and another office building. All of this would have been R2, and we have some commercial structures there, as well as you can see, the highway commercial line is here, and we have typical highway commercial, five-star, and TSC Shopping Center. So what we're doing is pretty, pretty easy. This property's been there. It's clearly a commercial structure, a commercial building. It's being, it's in the state, and it's being sold, or attempted to be sold, and the applicant and a potential buyer would like the zoning cleaned up to mirror what the current use is, which is a commercial structure. So with that, we require a zone change, and of course, we look at our comprehensive plan, and I'll point that out in just a minute. But this application was filed on March the 6th. I'll go through a couple technical things here. It's on page one, 2019, the applicant's Charlene Benji Estate, location, that's 100 Fox Harbor. That's 3.62 acres, .362 acres. So again, just a small lot on the corner. Current zoning GRB, and they're asking for highway commercial, and the existing land use obviously is commercial, because it's been a business. One of the first questions that came up is, you know, why couldn't you just move a business in that? It would clearly be grandfathered in, or non-conforming, but the property has sat vacant longer than the 12 months, so it lost grandfather, as we like to say. Grandfather's gone. But so it is a non-conforming structure sitting in the GRB, a residential zone. So any potential buyer would want to do this, to make sure the zoning's correct. Property owner would want to do this. And so as a way to move forward with the sale, the applicant is requesting a rezoning to highway commercial. The highway commercial was interesting a little bit, because again, it sort of makes sense, what's up on the bypass, what we think is highway commercial. A question is, you know, and this is zoomed out a little bit, again, I think we all know what highway commercial feels and looks like, but it's a little odd to think of it going back into a neighborhood. But interesting enough, highway commercial's the only zone we have that really allows a lot of things. For example, the conditions that they committed to, daycare, senior care, small office, professional, all those things have to be in highway commercial zone to be thereby right. You would need, for example, in this NCRC district that we have, you would need a zone change and a conditional use permit to do some of those things. We really don't have a clean commercial district that's of a neighborhood character or scale. The only really district that allows us to do most commercial use is highway commercial. So what the applicant did, and I'll point that out on, start on page two, as you guys know, we require a general development plan or concept plan. What the applicant is showing you on page two and on page three, is they made several conditions on page three that set the scale of this, and in a sense, take kind of all the things that potentially could happen in highway commercial kind of out of play. So I'll read those on page three. The applicant submitted these conditions, and it says, "The maximum height of all buildings shall be one-story," and we have a building that's one-story. Again, that limits some scale, as you guys know, as you see the bigger boxes to the south. "The maximum square footage shall be 3,000 square foot." Again, limiting the size of the building, the height of the building, limits the potential commercial opportunities. "One point of entry," the property already has that. Number D is kind of the big one on uses. It says, "The commercial use for real property, subject real property shall be limited to daycare, senior care, professional and non-professional office uses, and neighborhood commercial use is compatible with residential character along Fox Harbor Drive." And the way you do that is making sure the building stays in scale. The building, as you can see, is in scale, with a lot of the duplexes have been built there, size and look. And the last one says, "Signage will be limited to wall signs only, non-illuminated." So again, the likelihood we're going to see a McDonald's or something in tents go back there, it's not going to happen, even though highway commercial would allow that. There's no signage, there's no size, there's no ability to have those kind of intense uses. So the applicant has limited the scale to something, and at this point in time, they can't really discuss who the client is or what's going in on the property. There's still a sale in the mix here, but we're comfortable with these conditions, obviously, set the tone of what could happen in the neighborhood. And again, it's been a beauty college for years, there's parking spaces on the property, there's the site plan, which reflects what's on the property. So there's already parking, there's already access, some landscaping and a building. It's an attractive property on the corner there, and really, they're just moving the client in and getting it zoned properly. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I had a question about the size of the sign. It doesn't mention any of that, because that's always an issue.
Could be an issue. I don't think it is in this case, because right now, the sign is on the end of the building, and the wall sign is, we do define what you can do in highway commercial right now. So we do have a limit in highway commercial of 5% of that facade.
And there's no monument signs or anything?
No freestanding, wall signs only, and what's there?
I just wanted to make it clear, so that everybody knows that.
Well, you could potentially max it out. The max would be the 5% of the facade. And as you can see, because this is a residential-style structure, the likelihood we're going to get a ton of wall signage with the windows and the roof lines.
On the side that the residence...
That's really the only sign, or potentially the other side. And so you would get 5% of that facade if you went that far. I don't anticipate the new clients going in that direction, but you're correct, no pole signs, no monument signs, it's wall signs only. Page four, the staff report, and we'll finish up here. Talks about our comprehensive plan. As you guys know, when we look at zone changes, we have to look at our comprehensive plan for guidance and compliance. Chapter one, you can see, is our goals and objectives. I won't go through those, but we've listed some general land use development, community facilities, land use goals and objectives that we think apply to this case. And then chapter nine, as you know, gets into our future land use map. And I want to read a couple things here that specifically talk about our map. On page five, it says, " requested rezonings shall be reviewed for consistency with the future land use map, and the development review provisions below. Unless specifically exempted by the zoning ordinance or by the planning commission, all zone change requests must be accompanied by a general development plan, concept plan, or conditions," and you guys heard those already. "And then all proposals for new development must be assessed to determine the compatibility with existing surrounding development." And we think the conditions did those, too. But the map's the big one, and interesting enough, when the request first came in, we thought this might be a problem, but the future land use map has the commercial going all the way back here. So naturally, we would have assumed it would have been at the backside of the shopping center. These are clearly all duplexes and some single-family homes, but the future land use map goes back to the street. So it's in compliance with the flume, that's commercial. And it may be something we want to look at in the future if we get into our map. I mean, this corner kind of is what it is, but down the road, I think the intention is these will all be residential units. We've already been talking with some folks and pulled some permits. In fact, over on this side, just recently, just a little odd that that's commercial, because again, that could be lots of different stuff. Maybe the idea was back in the day, before those lots were created, this development would go all the way back, when, maybe it was done way back whenever. But clearly, this is the split between our, really, our intense commercial and our residential. But it complies with the future land use map 100%, and that's what we look at when we're looking at these zone change requests. And again, that's the layout, and that's everything I have. Page seven, again... Page seven, again, there were no staff items of concern. The bottom of seven says KRS one, KRS one hundred two thirteen on how we draft findings and look at the comp plan and determine if zone changes and compliance. And then as you know, page eight's our cookie cutter motions up or down that are, if you guys see to approve or deny, go forward at this point. That's all I have unless you guys have any questions. The applicant's here represented by legal counsel and I believe even the buyer's counsel's here too. So we have two pretty competent attorneys, Mr. Hilton and Ms. Thornberry, Melanie Thornberry's here to represent the buyer. So they'd be glad to answer any questions. They may want to add something on top of what I just did or give you a little summary of why they're moved forward with this.
Any questions for Steve? Hearing none, this will be a public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor of this zone change? Come to the mic, introduce yourself please, name and address.
Anne Ferguson, Kings Mill Road. Those of you who were at technical review probably know that, that I did have some concerns about this development. And I see that Steve and his staff of one person have really done some very good work on this in that two week period and I commend you for relieving my mind. The only concern that I still have is whether this qualifies as a, let me see here, spot zoning? Or does it qualify as a carve out? Either one of those, do they apply? Otherwise, I think you've done some very good work and it's kind of a problem because of the mix up in the zoning and in the plans that you've done well.
I'll just say this, I guess to you Anne and I'll tell the others. I've heard the word spot zoning for a lot of years. It, it's not a term I really recognize personally because it's a legal term, it's something, it's not in, it's not in our KRS one hundred, the term spot zoning, but we know what it is. I think there's court cases been out there all over the place about zoning property way out in the middle of nowhere, it's spot zoning. But consistency with the comprehensive plan and consistent with your flume is really the basis of all zone change requests. So there is some stuff that could happen that might appear to be spot zoning, but if it's what's your future land use, for example, you zoom on out, if we have future land use across the road or, or the property we just talked about, a property has GRA and they want to clean up their zoning, it might appear to look like we're zoning something way out in the middle of nowhere, but if we're consistent with other zoning, contiguous to other zoning or consistent with the comprehensive plan and the flume, I don't, I personally wouldn't call that spot zoning. And it's not a term I, I really gravitate towards. In this case, it's clearly contiguous to highway commercial. It's touching highway commercial. It's in the general area of highway commercial and I'd even say if someone came in tomorrow and said, I wanted to zone this parcel, you know, you could say, well, that's spot zoning, that's not. But I would say in general, there's commercial in this area and then the flume is what matters again, the goals and objectives. And is it consistent with that? So in this case, I didn't feel it was any of that. On top of all of that, it's already a commercial building. It's been a commercial building, it's been a commercial use. Why it was zoned GRB or R two, that, I, I don't know the history on that. That, you have to weigh that too. If there's a commercial node, let's say way out in Parksville and it's for ag for some reason and it's been a store and now it's vacant, I don't think it would be inappropriate for us to clean that zoning up someday and zone that rural commercial so the store could get back in operation, although that might be the only commercial way out in the middle of AR one, for example. I think it always goes back to the future land use map and the comp plan and, and the current use and the history of the property. So all those factors to me are, way I determine whether that looks right, at the end of the day, you guys vote, I don't, and then judges make ruling on zone changes if they're appealed at that point. So that's kind of how I look at it. Yes, sir?
The, the road, I forget the name of it, the one that's in the back there where the commercial houses are with the corner of that property is, which I totally agree on, I think it should be zone changed. But how does that affect whether some of the other planning and zoning things we've done with in terms of the light on the other side that connects to that road?
Well, right now, it, it's, it's talked about. Again, I think that's, that's an idea that we would somehow figure out some solution out here, but, but I think the reality is we have a growing neighborhood.
Yeah.
We have Denmark and side streets. There's a lot of folks that use this road and this is a heavily commercial area right here and right here. I, I'm not sure it does much more than this is just our split in the zoning. I'm not sure anyone's got any other proposals at this point to change any zoning.
It's just to keep it in our, our minds so that that is definitely a possibility that on the other side, on the Kroger side back there, you know, where the light, where the accidents involved would happen, that's going to be connected up theoretically.
Someday, yeah.
Theoretically. And also then, e- even though I, I think we should approve this, the, the empty lots in back of the place that's commercial already, you have to do something then to protect the neighborhood. Like you said, you mentioned, what are we going to do? Because we need to pre-think this.
Well, we, we may. It, funny enough, I think everything's happening way faster and might even be overthinking this one a little bit. We've already just issued permits for duplexes here. This is where we just mentioned that we need to put some streetlights up. We've got streetlights on this side and we need to finish this. We're going to be wall to wall duplexes out here before we blink. There's already lots being sold and so it's interesting that the future land use labeled this, but I think there's not going to be much we're going to have to worry about. It's just going to be built out fairly quick and I think we're going to have duplexes.
Residential.
All, yeah, all residential.
Yeah.
Now, what's interesting is when Krogers came in, this little piece here was set as a buffer between the neighborhood and the commercial. It actually is owned by Krogers, but it's GRB and this is HC, but that actually is their physical footprint. It's used as kind of a walking path and little community area, but it's not actually a city park. I think what happened historically, again, before these lots were platted, this whole area was thought to probably be a commercial node, residential this way. And then this was preserved and then these lots were just created and they're good residential lots that back up to commercial and no one seems to really care over there that, that these things, they all coexist pretty well. There's just a lot of volume of traffic trying to get here, around and back into here, and that's another issue.
I'm just, just thinking about, you know, like you do, I think we do have to think ahead of it.
Yeah.
Even though, I mean, I think that, like I said, the, the direct issue that we're talking about is fine, but I, I think we need to think about what's going to be next to it and also what ramifications that has for the businesses that are, that tractor supply. Are they going to have to build a big wall to protect, you know, like a buffer zone like we always do with different kinds of trees and things? What are they going to have to do when it is, when they do build.
Well, they're already there.
Houses on there.
So they wouldn't.
Is there anything there that's.
Now, what, what happens is, good question, and we're, we're getting a little off track, but.
But I mean, it needs to be.
They're, they're already there. We can't come in later and force these guys to screen from these. This, this development had its shot when it came in and have to meet a requirement. And at that point in time, we didn't have that intense of landscape requirements, but we can't come in later when these duplexes are being built and this owner says, I want a buffer. He's second guy in, there's not a requirement to buffer. You know, it's the commercial buffers from the residential. He would, that person would put that in on their own accord.
That's my point though.
But it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be asking any commercial folks to come in and do those things. Those are just things that will happen between two uses. And by the way, multi-family duplexes are multi-family and, and commercial, they coexist. They're compatible to some degree, so I don't know if we're going to have any problems. We get very few complaints about the shopping center in these residences at this, except for traffic, so.
Kurt, the house is on the south side of Fox Harbor, a base single family and the duplexes are on the north side. I think it's five, single family.
Yeah, I didn't get that far into it. There's duplexes in this GRA for some reason too. There's some singles there and they're zoned, but these are all, these are all clearly zoned multi-family and these are GRA, but they've had some conditional uses that allow the duplexes. So we're going to get all duplexes, I think, on all those areas is what appears it's going to be, so.
Anyone else like to speak in favor of this zone change?
I don't want to stir the pot too much, but just historically, real quick.
Introduce yourself and address please.
And I represent, I'm the executor of the Benji Estate. This building, it was purchased from Tom Byerly or this property. And when it was constructed about twenty-five years ago, it was constructed as a commercial property and it's always been commercial. And they ran a beauty school out of there, which also necessitated, they provided beautician services, nail services and all that. So the actual structure, it's not set up as a home, it's never been set up as a home and it's always been used as a commercial facility. Thank you all.
Anyone else like to speak in favor? This again, being a public hearing, anyone that'd like to speak in opposition to this Hearing no one, we will consider the hearing closed and the chair will entertain a motion to approve, disapprove or table. Yes?
I make the motion that we approve based on the five conditions on page three, eight thirty.
One second. We good with that, Henry?
If you would add that it is compliant with the future land use map and the comprehensive plan.
That's fine.
Thanks.
Good.
One second.
Vince seconds. Questions, discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Jim made the motion, Vince second. Am I correct?
That family name makes the best trumpets too.
Thank you all.
Benj family.
Okay. Under new business, advisory committee has not met, we have no business. We're going to say personnel to last. Budget committee report, anything there, Terry, to report?
Not unless Steve wants to just give a verbal update on your budget presentations, but the committee itself has not met.
Thank you.
The committee presented to the city last week, no legislative policy, uh, either county Friday. We do need a budget committee meeting in the next couple of weeks on some other items and Karen, I don't want to bring some together after the meeting, but I think we're bored since we've got any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? Any announcements? We do have a personnel issue that we need to discuss and to do so, we need to go into executive session to do so.
If Kurt wants to make it, if Kurt wants to make it.
I make a motion to go into closed session.
Yes.
Pursuant to KRS six one dot eight one zero one F, personnel discussions are hearing which might lead to the appointment discipline or dismissal of an individual planning commission employee.
Got a motion?
I'll move.
And Vince seconds. All in favor going to executive mission, executive session, discuss this personnel issue? All right, vote unanimous. Thank you.
I make a motion to go back into regular session.
Wendy moves to go back to regular session.
Second.
And Jim seconds. All in favor? Vote unanimous. Folks, Lisa has been absent from work for the whole month of March, correct Steve? Due to health issues and there's really a concern about whether she's going to be able to come back or not and if so, when? So in order to help Steve and rectify some situations, we have decided as the personnel committee to continue to pay Lisa's health benefits, but she is also on unpaid sick leave, which she has used up all of her time. So we need a motion to continue to pay her health benefits if that's appropriate or satisfactory to the commission.
I make the motion.
Probably going to just go on both of these?
No, just that one right there.
Just the first one, right?
Yes. Vince moves that we continue to pay the health benefits. Jeff seconds. Questions, discussion on that?
Just add the wording from our.
We ain't got that yet.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, all in favor of paying the health benefit?
Who, who made that second? I'm sorry.
Jeff.
Jeff, who made the mo- first then?
Vince.
Vince already, thank you.
Okay. All right, then the second thing, in order to try to fill in the void there with Lisa being absent, we need to look at some type of employment. And Stephen has looked at as an intern as probably our best option with about twelve to twenty-five hours a week. And in order to do that, he has put together an intern assistant agreement. And Henry, you wanted to add some things to that?
If you would make your motion conditional on additions of independent contractor language and that's, that's the full scope of anything that would be added to it, nothing more.
Okay, thank you. So if we're okay with that, we need a motion in a second.
I make the motion that we approve Personnel Action Item Number Two with the ability to make amendments to the independent contractor agreement.
Okay. And Wendy seconds. Questions, discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Vote unanimous. Thank you. Any other? Good for the order. Hearing none, a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Jeff seconds. Jim seconds. All in favor, we are adjourned. Thank you all.